Location? Thank you, ma'am. You got everything out? Okay. While they're coming to their seats, I do want to apologize to those of you that have had to wait. We did have our budget workshop and as would have it, when you're talking money, it took longer than anticipated. We did recess that meeting though so that we can continue after our regular meeting. So at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we have with us this evening Dr. Ron Godbolt from the Word of Truth Ministry to lead a center at vacation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day you blessed us to see. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for this opportunity to share our vision with the community. And we ask your blessing upon the commissioners and those in charge, the mayor, that they may make the right decisions, that people can live a peaceful life. We give you praise for all that you've done, how you continue to bless us, and how you're going to protect us through this pandemic. Strengthen your people, Lord. Protect us from all harm and evil. We give your name praise for all that you're doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, I would like to add to our agenda, or really change in our agenda. If I could move item F up so that it becomes item A and then just move everyone else down. Our youth members that are here tonight have to school tomorrow and did not anticipate our being this late. Yes, she's got to turn us on live. That's okay. Is there any other addition or deletion to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have an addition or new business.
Okay.
Discussion regarding Hope Mills Lake ordinance.
Under new business?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
The public hearing annexation case?
Yes.
The made error and the notice and the ad for it. So do you need to pull that off and reschedule for June 7th or what?
Okay, so under public hearings, we will not have the item A. We'll be moving that to the next available date or the date. Okay, I just put next available.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Okay. I'll do that. All right, I'm going to come down to the floor microphone that way. And I'll ask Mayor Protim to join me so that she can help me make these presentations. I know they're not all here. And I'll try to talk well and quickly. Okay. First of all, I want you to note that this year has been an unusual year for the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. Unusual in that with the exception of our last meeting, the most that we've had at any one meeting in person is one student. Every time we've done it by Zoom, to the point that we've even had our conference room set up with available Zoom site in there. Mr. McLachlan, who has been our liaison from the staff, has learned a lot from this group. He knows how to do a lot of new types of meetings and he's learned how to do this type of agenda. What else have you learned?
I had to figure out the background.
But what we have found with this teacher group is that through technology and through the ability of this young group of middle women, that we have not only have they taught us something, but they have been able to work at three high schools, cooperate together, they have come up with more projects, completed more tasks, and done more things than any Mayor's Youth Leadership before. So not only do I want to congratulate them for that, but very soon you're going to see a sign out on Highway 162 where the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council has adopted Highway 162. That means that from here on out, the Mayor's Youth Leadership has got to get in a cleaner road. But the good news is they accomplished that with all the efforts on their own. Get them the information. Get them the information and they took the task. They've also tried to organize without having to school. It was difficult. They organized a contest for our contest for Hope the Hero or environmental cleanups. They did apply to and have our on the board being approved with the State Youth Council for being a representative of the State Youth Council or co-bills. Even had a conversation with the state county council, the state county council council, so that they would be assured that we would not compete. So the idea is with all the things going on in the pandemic, that this group of young men is going to save and does a fantastic job. I'm overly proud. I can't say enough about them to let you know that this is Southview, Jackbury, and Grace Creek working unified together for our community. So we'll start. We've got a special certificate that just says it's awarded to for participation in the Mayor's Youth Leadership Committee, Marion Harper Ray. If they're not here, we're going to mail them to the school. Tristan Sutherland. The unique thing about Tristan, Tristan is our chairman, he's the one that I saw every week. He's the one that did all the agendas. He's the one that did all the documents. He did all the invites. He organized so much that I didn't have to do anything. And I mean, it's unbelievable. And Mr. McLachlan didn't have to do any. But the other neat thing is, how old are you?
I'm turning seventeen, actually.
So really, this whole year, you've been sixteen years old. Sixteen. And I can tell you, he could run his town to live. So anyway, thank you so much, Tristan, and we appreciate everything you've done. Lois Sonnahan. Hope Bartwinski. Satyapi Blumbell, Ellen? I may have said it wrong. Okay. Jasmine Belize? Okay. And this lady right here has been our, I think, family advisor. And she has been just unbelievable as far as I'll say, she's sent force also. Michaela Young? I'll take her. Okay? Dakota Mason? I see it's so nice to see a face because in some cases, I saw a little icon instead of a person. Nicholas Jones? And you're six.
I'm a junior.
A junior, a junior, all righty. Tiana Silva? Roman Diego Genez? All right, thank you. Chazzy Jacobs? Cannon Terry, oh Cannon Terry? Hunter Stewart? Laura Laura Lassario? This lady sure is our secretary. And you see, she's secretary, she's from Grace Creek. He's chairman of the group, he's from Jackbury, they got along just fine. And she's also been accepted to University of North Fine Chapel Hill. She's a woman. Jacob Miller? Ricardo? Say it for me, sir.
Ta-ta-ta.
I said all, every time I said it wrong. Say it for me again.
Ta-ta-ta.
Ta-ta-ta. Isn't that neat, no? Ta-ta-ta, but I always get it wrong. Thank you so much. And people that are here, just know that this is not only nice for us to recognize these leaders, but these are the leaders of tomorrow and Hope Mills. We don't want you going anywhere. Go to school, come back, and stay with us. You just belong here as the leaders of tomorrow. So thank you so much. Next, we have Public Safety Building Project Update presented by Scott Garner. And we'll let you come to the microphone at this time.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. And I'll try to give you a brief report. I think things are going along pretty well. Foundations are complete. The concrete block walls are well on the way. You can start to see the shape of the building a little bit. Underground plumbing is complete and tested. We will be starting the water line under LA Priest. That will be one of the next things. The stormwater storage is going in. And then we'll do the remainder of the earthwork, which is basically filled. And that will be a major achievement because the potential for change orders is in the earthwork, for the big change orders. And so if we can get through that, we will have dodged a big bullet. And so I'm looking forward to that. And I think we're in good shape on that. Structural steel should be starting delivery within the next week or two and be in place on site by mid-June. And about that time, a crane will be put in. It'll be put in in the back L of the building. You'll be able to reach both ends of the building from that. And should be able to put up the steel without resetting the crane. So that will be a big thing. By my estimate, the building is about eighteen to twenty percent complete. We are on schedule. We have no pending change orders. And if we can get through this earthwork without a major change order, that will be a major plus. Tonight, I'm going to show you some sketches of the outside of the building. We need to do, we need to get approval of the building materials and exterior to stay on schedule. And so.
Turn that.
Yeah, let's do that. The. Well, let me handle this. I, what we were trying to do was to create one building, a public safety building, for two separate departments. And so what we want to do is have a unified look for the public safety building. And then we want to give a recognize the police department and the fire department. And so this is looking, this is looking down Rockfish. And you see, this is the police part of the building. This is the shared entry right here with the three flags. The entrance is going to be ramped here.
Thank you.
And then this is the fire department around the corner. And what unifies this is we have a.
Thank you, sir.
The barrel roof switch with the standing ceiling roof. It's going to have a silver finish. It's very efficient for reflecting heat. It's one of two or three colors that you can choose to reflect the heat. And it works very well. And this is a view of the, of the fire department. So you can see we have red doors, we have the silver roof, we have the brick, which is common to the whole building. It pulls it all together. And then we have, um, the police department, we have blue patterns. And the fire chief and police chief like that very much because it gives them their own identity and people will be able to recognize. This is the police department, this is the fire department. And it works very well. And primary materials are red, standing seam roof, metal panels, and stool foot. And so these are our colors. I think it works very well. It will be a very striking building. It has some historic flavor, an industrial flavor to pick up the Hope Mills heritage. And it also has a modern look to it. So in a way, it's timeless. And so that's been one of our goals, is to create a timeless building. And I think we've done that. So we're very excited about it and hope that you are.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question, Scott, I thank you very much. This design, you want us to approve this design tonight? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
And if we do, is this within the budget?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We made some adjustments. We made some adjustments in doing this. There was a slight cost change, but it was in your favor.
Oh, okay.
So we are, believe me, we're very mindful of budget. We are, we have not, this is, there's no cost additions to this. In fact, we get a small credit, very small, but.
Okay.
A credit.
Thank you, Scott.
How similar are these bricks to the bricks in this building?
Well, it's a couple of bricks. It's a, it's a very nice brick. It's a total plate work. It's a, I don't know the name of it, it's a purple or orange brick. It's a, it's a red brick.
So it's going to complement this building? It's not going to look, it's not going to take away from the.
I think it'll work well with this building. And we thought that it was very much in keeping with the textile bills that we used to do.
Ah, yes, yes.
That's kind of what we picked up.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, anyone?
I'll go ahead and make the motion if somebody else has any questions.
I do.
Okay.
Scott, can you get to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm showing this picture first. I'm making, I drew, I'll show it to you and you can bring it to me. Why are the roofs running in two different directions here?
Why what?
Why the roof running in two different directions right here? It shows one building.
It's going on towards the roof. Scott runs the microphone. You've got this roof going this way and then.
The building is an L-shaped building. And the reason for that is because the, the fire chief felt it was very important for the trucks to exit directly onto Golf View Road. And so his portion of the building faces Golf View. The police portion faces Rockfish. And what that does is that breaks down the scale. If we had put those two things right side by side, it would appear to be a very, very large building. It would have a scale.
It is a very large building.
It would not be in keeping with this building or the parks and recreation building. And so that worked very well. It works very well functionally for the fire to face that way because they need to do that for traffic reasons and the police to face this way. But it also gives the building a good scale so that it won't be overwhelming.
Yes, sir. What I was talking about, about making the turn of the board, this roof running this way and this one running this way.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't figure out the way the structure's going up. It would appear that it's all going one way.
No, it's, it's going to work out. And once, once they start erecting steel, you will be able to see it and you'll see the form of the building. And it's a very exciting time. I think you'll, I think you'll like it.
I'll be out there watching because I'm sitting on Chief Hodges parking lot about three or four times a week watching.
Well, good.
Watching from the ground going up.
Keep watching. We'd like to have that happen.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor to approve this design, raise your right hand. And seeing none opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's nice.
Thank you, Scott.
Please leave these on display.
Good, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
That'd be something we need to put in the front lobby too, to leave out there for people to see.
Is that what you're hearing?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have, I know that many of you know that one of the things that's been brought to our attention, to include the youth brought to our attention and worked on it this year, is that we need to clean Hope Mills up. There's a lot of trash, a lot of roads, a lot of litter that continues to flow even after we have a cleanup. And so we had, during our mayor's coalition meeting, we had, and this is again why it's so good to communicate all across Cumberland County. Because what we found from then is something that we could tag on to and be a part of. And it would increase and enhance what we're trying to do, which our youth tried to do in a small way. But now we can do this with the aid of working with Cumberland County. So I'd like to invite Amanda Bader. She's with Cumberland County Solid Waste Management. She's Commonwealth, Commonwealth Solid Waste Management Director. And she and the county have an anti-littering campaign. And that she has brought the information to us this evening. And I'm just going to turn it over to her and let her share with you what she's going to challenge Hope Mills to do.
Thank you so much. I'm going to use the microphone because my voice is, I mowed grass yesterday, so I'm struggling today.
I know.
So good to see you all and I appreciate the invitation to talk about this. This is, I'm very passionate about litter. I'm very passionate about cleanup. And the county has started two anti-litter campaigns. And we want you to know what we're doing and we want you to come be a part. So, um, let's see. The first one I'm going to talk about is Five for Friday. Okay? Five for Friday is about you taking a pledge to be a part of the solution. And when you take the pledge, we're going to give you a gift of a car litter bag so that when you can put this on your headrest and when you stop at a convenience store, you can empty out your litter bag. Five for Friday has, we have teamed up with the city of Fayetteville. The purpose to encourage businesses, schools, communities to reverse litter. Actually, we started the campaign, Fayetteville heard about it. They wanted to get in on it. I'm so excited that the towns want to hear more about it because we want you to join in with the counties. But basically, you pick up five pieces of trash on Friday. We're bringing this to the schools. We have a coloring book. Your youth already recognizes the problem, which is encouraging. We have a coloring book with Stan the Can. We have an actual mascot, Stan. I understand his picture. So you have Stan in graphic form. And then you have Stan, a real life person. So Stan is our mascot. Stan has been in some classrooms virtually. Stan is at our events. With the coloring books, we can provide these for the classroom. We also have little sand buckets so the kids can pick up five pieces of litter. Here at your athletic complex, what a great way to get your teams involved to pick up five pieces of litter. Here at your campus, what a great place to get your staff involved to pick up five pieces of litter on Friday, maybe during lunch. So that's, this is meant to be a fun, engaging campaign that reaches to youth to all ages. And I can see where it can be incorporated so many places. So you've got the pledge card. We can provide you with a poster as well to post here at your complex. There are opportunities for business sponsorship. We're teamed with Sustainable Sand Heels, who is our outreach with businesses. And we even have a hashtag, Five for Friday, Stan the Can. So if someone picks up an event themselves, like say you do one after a baseball game, use the hashtag. Let us know. Our PO, we'd love to come out and take photos. Make this a fun event. Get it out on social media. Five for Friday, Stan the Can. The next campaign I want to talk about is Cumberland Clean. I know you've all heard about Fayetteville Beautiful, right? Fayetteville Beautiful, it's a big event that's fabulous. And the city of Fayetteville signs up and comes and picks up trash. But we thought, why can't we do that in the county? Let's make this a countywide event. So we, we had our first event back in April. It was on April 17th. We had about forty-five volunteers and we picked up about 2,000 pounds of trash. And if you think that doesn't sound like fun, you're wrong. We all had a great time. I had staff that was there in support of the event. They were shocked themselves at how much fun they had. They got to meet people in the community that do care, that do want to make a difference. So I encourage you to be a part of our Cumberland Clean team. You have the Cumberland Clean bag that all the participants got. They got a tee shirt, bottle of water, gloves, bags, hand sanitizer. And everyone pitched in and it was really a fun day. So this, these are pictures of our first event. You can see we've got some Boy Scouts involved. We've got some everyday citizens involved. If you were a single person and you said, I want to be with a group, we would team you up with a group. If you had a place that you wanted to pick up by yourself, then you can pick up there. And our staff is there to support you and to pick up the bags. And we've already got the next one scheduled. It's scheduled for September 18th, 2021. We'd like to have another countywide event. And we would love to have Hope Mills participate with us, sponsor with us, partner with us. Really love to see cooperation across the county and, and to get your name out there as well. And then if you want to register, just let me know, let our office know. We are more than happy to sign you up. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. You have any questions or thoughts?
Do you have a number on here anymore?
Yeah.
The number is here, 910-321-6920. And I'll give you my email address.
321?
Yes, 910-321-6920.
5920?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think I know what we're going to be doing on September 18th.
That's right.
I think we should sign up and partner with your organization on September 18th.
We'd love to, we'd love to see this grow. We would love to see more people out and about. It brings, truly brings awareness. We've had so many problems with it during the pandemic. We want people to take pride in their community again. I think people, we all kind of got out of sorts during the pandemic, so.
Yes, we did.
I think it'll be great to get back together in the fall and do this.
I would like tonight, because I have, of course, I got the edge because I've had this presentation. But I would like to tear off and return this to who gave it to me and let you know that I challenge the staff of Hope Mills and the county and our board here to not only do the Five for Friday, but if you sign your pledge tonight, you've already got your prize. And all you got to do is on Fridays, pick up five pieces of trash. And so I challenge our staff to do that because when you walk the track or when you're out about, all you got to do is on Fridays, pick up five pieces of trash. And we'll take your picture and we'll show how good Hope Mills is. But I appreciate everything you're doing. And I also appreciate the fact that we can participate. I think this is a good thing for Hope Mills and it's a positive thing.
Yes.
You guys are already behind. I picked up more pieces than that out of my front yard yesterday.
Yeah, but you hadn't joined yet.
Well, now you can get credit for it.
Traffic going by.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Morrison, is September 18th, is that not our next litter cleanup day? I know it's in September.
It will be, it will be. It will.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and Mr. Morrison, I want to make sure that we get the information to you and to Beth Brown so that what we can do is a lot of the things that she offers that we can use for Hope Mills and move forward. But again, starting this Friday, Five for Friday. And this is for your car. So when you, you know how we've got some people that take and empty their car trash right out here in the parking lot?
Yes.
Well, this, if nothing else will be good, we'll put ours in our little bag and put it in the trash can.
You can't count that.
Now, you got to pick up five outside. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Uh-huh, you're quite welcome. And thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Cumberland County Community Health. Now, and this is Tamara Morris. And what I want to tell you about this is this is an opportunity for us to participate in the health assessment that is done also countywide. And this lady, when we had our mayor's coalition meeting, the opportunity was for us to get the information. We would not have known about this had we not had that meeting and we would not be able to participate. So I'll turn it over to you and let you tell us all about it. So I'll turn it over to you and let you tell us all about it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me out tonight. Um, like she said, my name is Tamara Morris. I am a public health educator at our Cumberland County Health Department and we are currently conducting our community health assessment. Um, we do this in partnership with Health E N C. Um, this is a Foundation for Health Leadership and Innovation program that comes, um, throughout eastern North Carolina. So there are 33 counties that are a part of the collaborative and it is in assistance to align us with, um, our health needs community assessment so that we'll be on the same yearly lineup with local hospitals as well as local health departments. Um, the timeframe doesn't always align with the submission of data for this. So in order to not have a duplication of efforts, we've joined the Health E N C, um, schedule to be on a regional assessment for the community health needs assessment. So we do this, um, every three years. This effort syncs in all of the organizations that are a part of the program. Uh, we combine the effort with local hospitals and local agencies to improve the quality and utility of population health data. And that helps us compare and contrast the interventions that we plan. And that's how we, um, develop our community health improvement plan and we include that information in our state of the county health report. Um, so basically our community health needs assessment is, um, just a survey that's asking input from community members, um, wanting to know, um, of course, their demographic information, what their thoughts are on health services throughout the community. Um, it is a little lengthier this year because there are some, um, questions about climate change and COVID. Um, so we're just gathering those responses. We will turn those in by June 18th. Um, all surveys need to be completed and Health E N C will help us analyze that data. And so we'll take into consideration the themes that are found from our focus groups and from the surveys that are collected. And we, that's how we'll develop our community health improvement plan. So we need as many people as possible to take the survey. Um, we have a personal, uh, Health E N C goal for each county to make it to at least their 20 benchmark, which means that they needed at least 300 surveys from every county. Um, our health director's personal goal was for us to get at least 1,000. We're currently at 792. So, um, we would love more participation. Uh, we did recognize from our previous years that we needed to outspan our, um, our demographic reach. So we needed more folks in rural areas to participate, more of, um, Hispanic communities, people of different demographic, um, income ranges. So we're trying really hard to make sure that we get the word out to get greater participation on that. Um, I did bring hard copies of the surveys that I left with the town clerk. So if anyone wants to complete those, they can. And they can be left, um, at, here at your campus and I'll pick those up weekly until we reach our deadline. Um, they're also available in our palm cards and the palm cards have, um, QR codes on them. Yes, they have the QR codes and so you just point your camera at the QR code. Don't take the picture, just point it and the website pops up. And we get those, um, directly to the Health E N C team and that populates into our data account every Monday. So, um, we're currently working really hard to find out what your thoughts are on community health so that we can, um, develop interventions and make our health improvement plan.
Okay, anybody have questions? I did give you one of the palm cards that I received at the, our mayor's coalition meeting and I'll give the, the remainder of these so that we can make sure we get these done. And Jane's got some also. But this is, uh, this is a way that we can participate, um, as residents of Hope Mills and be a part of this, uh, countywide survey. Thank you so much for coming this evening. We appreciate it.
If anyone needs additional information, um, from me, um, I am your community liaison from the Health Department. So all of our health educators have, um, divided the municipalities amongst, amongst us to make sure that you all have someone that you can contact for health fairs or information that you want to get shared out about the community. And so I'm that person and I also left my card if anyone needs, um, contact information for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have a proclamation to read. May 16th through 23rd, 2021 is National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the town of Hope Mills. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the town of Hope Mills to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now, resolved, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, do hereby designate the week, May 16th through 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association and the government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. And I have a certificate that reads, uh, from the Office of the Mayor, Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, certificate of appreciation presented to our public work staff and appreciation of your outstanding dedicated service and hard work for the town of Hope Mills. And in recognition of you during this National Public Works Week, May 16th, 2021 through May 23rd, 2021, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, join the town commissioners in thanking you. Is, there's some Don Siska bruises here. Come up and let me give you this proclamation.
And I know how well, and I know our board at this time, we're just standing there.
Next proclamation is Memorial Day, May 31st, 2021. Whereas Memorial Day was first widely observed on May 30th, 1868 and called Decoration Day to commemorate the nation's Civil War dead by decorating their graves. Whereas Memorial Day evolved to commemorate American military personnel who died in all wars and was declared a national holiday by Congress in 1971 to be celebrated the last Monday in May. Whereas each Memorial Day, Americans remember the debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans who gave their lives for our country. Whereas thousands of American men and women have given their lives for their country and many thousands more still bear severe disabilities and the scars of war. And by remembering these, we're reminded that the cost of war and peace is great. Whereas we continue to rely on our brave and steadfast men and women in uniform to defend our freedoms, we commemorate this noble American holiday. We honor those who fell in defense of our freedoms and we honor them in our memory. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and in memory of the thousands of American men and women who have answered the call in duty to defending the hard-won freedoms we enjoy today. And those who have sacrificed their lives in the defense of their country. And we will have our special Memorial Day service here at our Veterans Park and we encourage all of our citizens to please attend. I'm losing my voice. Next, we do not have public hearing because it's going to be moved to next available date. The next thing on our agenda will be, um, public comments. And I do have two that have signed up. One of those is Jeff Smith and he sent a written comment and I'll ask Ms. Starling if she'll read that into the record.
This comment is from Jeff Smith. Jeff Smith Family Conservancy LLC, 5333 Camden Road. Mayor and commissioners, while paddling on the Little Rock Fish Creek this past weekend, I ran into several groups of people who had paddled up from the lake area. Each group stopped to share what they perceived as alarming news about accessing the lake. Essentially, they were warning me that the town was going to start charging people to put their canoes and kayaks in the lake starting in July. I was confused because I recall from the town's work on the dam and input from the Lake Committee that the town made a clear decision to not charge people using canoes and kayaks, i.e. non-motorized boats at the lake. However, to my dismay, I found information on the town's website that confirmed their warning. See attached screenshot for reference. I hope the town will consider this policy, this change of policy, reconsider this change of policy. Now that the lake is back, we've seen an enormous response of people wanting to come to Hope Mills to experience and enjoy the lake. That has been a wonderful thing to everyone. It would seem counterintuitive to now begin charging those people to use the lake. Remember those same people spend their discretionary dollars in our stores, in our shops and in our restaurants. It is my opinion that charging non-motorized boats, such as paddle boats, kayaks and canoes, is a disincentive. In fact, almost every person that stopped to warn me about the new changed, mentioned they would likely find another creek, river or lake to explore rather than pay a fee to use the Hope Mills Lake. I am disheartened if, in fact, the town does begin to charge non-motorized boats regardless of whether or not they reside in the town. The town doesn't charge people to walk the golf course trail, nor does it charge people to swing on the swings at the park, nor to play on the playground. It doesn't charge people to use the tennis courts, nor does it charge people to pull out a lounge chair and enjoy the lake park. And as a gentle reminder, the town has received millions of dollars from state and federal taxpayers outside of Hope Mills to fund many of the recreation facilities in Hope Mills, including the rebuild the dam. Let's not cut off our nose to spite our face without first considering the unintended consequences with such a decision to begin charging people to put a non-motorized boat in the lake. Hope Mills talks about wanting to attract and welcome people to our town. Hope Mills talks about building community. Let's do the right thing and keep the public lake free and open to all those.
Thank you, ma'am.
You made it.
Next we have Casey Ferris.
Good evening. My name is Casey Ferris. I am the president for the Hope Mills Area Chamber of Commerce. I live at 4812 Cedar Pass Drive. And at the risk of sounding like a broken record, the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce is here tonight on behalf of the entire chamber and all of our business members to address the issue of one of our members who is conducting business at the lake. Um, so the point that we would like to make is that Yakalaki Outfitters has brought traffic and attention to our town during a time when traffic was very limited. They bought, brought a socially distant activity to a, not too long ago, empty lake and massive attention to our town by doing so. It may seem that the town isn't making money off of Yakalaki, but that's only if you don't look deeper and see the amount of traffic they bring to the lake and surrounding areas. People who traveled from Parkton, Aberdeen and Raleigh and didn't even know that we had a lake. People who have come here and eaten and spent their tax dollars in Hope Mills and visited our stores. Big T, if Big T's was here, I am sure they would tell you that they have only profited from the activity at Hope Mills Lake. Yakalaki Outfitters had been mentioned in the following publications and websites. Up and Coming Weekly, Our State Magazine, Newsbreak, The Visitors and Convention Bureau, Fayetteville Observer, The Fort Bragg Relocation Guide, Forbes, Food Diary of a City Girl and several, several other blogs. And that was in five minutes of Googling that I found. Um, to address the issue of them conducting business at the lake, uh, the food truck rodeo, the old farmer's market, old mill days, every chamber luncheon we have ever had in the history of mankind, business has been conducted on town property. Funds have exchanged hands on town property. Now, these may be a little bit different because they're events that we got approved ahead of time. However, photographers, food deliveries, my wedding pictures were photographed at the lake. And by trying to eliminate business at the lake, we eliminate some of the productive businesses. What the chamber would ask is that we be involved as, in it, as involved as possible in this resolution, whereas we find something that is right and not something that is right now. We would like to offer the resources and assistance of the chamber to work with the town to resolve this issue as to what is best for Hope Mills, its businesses and our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before you?
Motion, can I breathe?
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right, next we have, uh, item D that was added, um, but we don't have in front of us this ordinance to look at. So I guess Commissioner Bellflowers asked for a Hope Mills Lake ordinance to be included. So do we have, yes, ma'am?
Got old business first, I think, right?
I'm sorry. Bah, I put it in the wrong spot. I'll just leave that alone and put it down here. Old business, discussion of, uh, discussion regarding a local business renting, selling kayaks on town-owned property, Hope Mills Lake Park without authorization. And I'll, Commissioner Bellflowers requested this to be put on the agenda. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bellflowers. Commissioner Bellflowers?
And I can't agree more, Casey. I really, truly, I cannot agree more. Over the past couple of weeks, I'm going to tell you what, what the issue has been has, there's been a lot of traffic at the lake. And this past, not this past weekend, but the weekend before last, there was a lot of kayaks that dominated the entire kayak launch area at the lake completely, where people that privately own kayaks and canoes could not put their kayak and canoe into the lake. Some of these folks, they even sent me pictures and I have them. I have them right here on my phone because I said, really? It's completely, it's completely full. Also, they were renting kayaks at the lake. I'm not against any business. I promote businesses and I agree, Casey, with what you said, I do. But we've got to do it right and we've got to do it fair. If, if this kayak company is renting and selling kayaks at the lake and we take no action, then what would prevent someone from opening a taco stand on a cart out on the, out on the fishing pier? In fact, one guy told me, he says, look, he says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start selling fish bait on the fishing pier if you guys are going to allow the renting and selling of the kayaks at the lake and dominate the entire launch.
Commissioner Bellflowers? I would like to ask, especially in, in essence of time, that we, this would have been something that could have been reported to our town manager to investigate as far as the reports that were brought to your attention. And I would ask that rather than, um, discuss this, um, this also should have been something that would have brought to the attention of the business owner. So could we move this to, uh, being brought back to us after the town manager has time to research and get more information from the people that, uh, you've gotten requests to investigate this? Would the board agree that this could be moved, um, or could be tabled until such time the town manager could look into this?
Madam Warren?
Yes.
I move that it be tabled until the town manager has time to look into this.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
We've been through this same thing with this same group before. So, yeah, maybe this study's the best thing we need to do.
Well, and Commissioner Legg, if you will recall, we did have attorney advisement the last time. And so when something like this reenters our agenda, prior to it coming here, I think it should go to our town manager because we have set a ruling previously and has been on our agenda, in fact, about a year ago. So I would just request that we have a motion to table this and let the town manager research it. All those in favor signify.
I'll support, I'll support the table.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand? Thank you. So at this time, uh, we'll let our town manager, uh, move forward with the investigation. All right, next discussion, a possible action on media engagement research requested by the board at the April 19th meeting. And I'll turn this over to, um, the committee, who is representing our committee.
Okay, um, we, we got together. I've been with, uh, Phil Bowman, as amongst with Phil Bowman, uh, Up and Coming. I guess it's a weekly now and he's talking about moving into a daily. So this is one opportunity for the town. In this In this situation, he would have someone that would be assigned directly to Hope Mills. He would have a reporter at every meeting that would know what's going on. We also met with Parks and Rec and talked about the cumulus radio operations and their, use of their, because I guess they have so many stations that meet most of the population here, demand. I don't know all of their, their formats, but I guess most of their formats would meet most of us. I guess if they have the old, I would listen to it. But I guess the thing is, on the radio stations, you're gonna have to pay for whatever that cost is for a fifteen-second or thirty-second ad. On the, on the Up and Coming, turning into a daily, what he's looking at, and he's got a progression from now all the way through next year, next March. It's like a year process of launching this from a weekly to a daily, five-days a week. He's talking thirty thousand dollars approximately for the town to buy into that. There's also, you know, I guess Tiffany does a release of Hope Mills, what is it? Quarterly news letter. Quarterly news letter. And I don't know if that's fast enough for what you're looking at, the media coverage that you're looking at. That's one opportunity. I mean, I think that should continue, you know, quarterly. But if you want to get something out after every meeting regarding what's going on, what's happening in the town, you're probably gonna have to pay for it. So I mean, there's really no way around that action. But it just depends on which you want, what type of coverage you want. I guess there's the Honda Rosa, which is a local person that, that does, that looks really impressive as far as color and things. I mean, it had some things from Spring Lake, it has things from the county, it has, you know, the whole area covered in it. But again, I don't know how often that comes out, is monthly, so. So you're gonna have to decide if you want something that's covered you after every meeting, things are going on like that, then it's gonna be a cost to buy. But there are, you know, like again, there's several, several things. You know, I don't know if the cumulus radio thing is something that you want. Now, for me, Parks and Rec, that would be bad ones for things that are coming up for them because their events are happening all the time, you know, basketball sign-up, baseball sign-up, these types of things. Vibe for the old mill, I guess, their hundred thirtieth celebration, those types of things. That would be great for the radio. Whereas to get information out specifically about a meeting, you're gonna need somebody that's actually here, probably, recording.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll be the first to jump in the water. We could take that thirty thousand dollars you just spoke about and give a raise to some of these employees that may quit if they don't get some full-time work. We've been through this before with this same group at twenty-eight thousand dollars. As you said, Tiffany would turn out a report to him. We're writing his report for him, not, not him.
I believe what he's looking at for the thirty thousand, he is gonna hire somebody and would assign them directly to the town.
We get publicity on the Goldie Show about every morning. Good or bad, we get it. I just have a problem with the way this went down before. And I know everybody don't agree with me on that, but that's just my, my view on it. So, but I appreciate the information.
Social media, only so many people read social media. Up and Coming, I have no idea what their circulation is as far as readership. You know, none of these things, you know, specific readership-type numbers, there's no way we had time to get you any of that. But, you know, we went to Samio's for lunch, and the rack of Up and Coming was gone. I mean, it was empty. I don't know how many they put in there, but it was empty, so. Of course, I don't, you know, go to like Harley Sees or anything like that, I don't shop there. So I wouldn't know what that rack is like. You know, again, you know, if you want to get something that's specific, because obviously the Fayetteville Observer's not gonna spend some of the other money anymore, so.
And they're not covered. I did, WIDU, I did go and was, had a recorded interview there. I was there last Tuesday, and they do, they will periodically record the mayor and, and more or less, this was more of a get-to-know-you, and then I can come back. They did invite me to come and participate with Mayor Colvin from Fayetteville and have a discussion about, you know, things happening in Cumberland County. That, that's free, but it is, it's one of those cases where, like, I was recorded on Tuesday, and I don't know, he'll let me know when it's going to be played. So it would not be as up-to-date as, as it would be cumulus radio and also the basically stations. I know that for anything we do with them, we would have to pay. They would, they would come and, you know, interview somebody, or they would let us send them information, but it would be like paying for advertisements. So again, right now, our good news source that we had with Roger Mullen and the Fayetteville Observer, once they changed ownership and changed format, there isn't, there isn't a news source out there. And what we're dependent on right now is what's happening on social media. And, and in most cases, I don't know how many, how much readership our town website or our town site has. As Jane wants to say something.
I spoke at length with Sally Shutt about our spectrum submissions, and she has invited us to make the business submissions. We're eager to get more media from all of the local municipalities, all of the, on that government channel. And she's working on, they've been, they're aware of the issues with the guide that Commissioner Legg was concerned about, that's when we first discussed this. And they've been working to get that fixed. But that's free.
Yeah. Would we have to, would we have to obligate a staff member to write for that?
Well, I don't know about written materials, like...
So just be recorded materials?
This recording, it'll be on Friday evening. Tiffany's gonna start publishing the schedule on Facebook and on the town website.
Okay. So this meeting would show, this meeting's gonna show two Fridays?
It'll show this Friday.
And then there won't be anything next Friday, the following week?
And then run it.
Okay, so it's just gonna be our board meeting that will be shown?
Well, I'll give them the budget meetings.
Okay.
And anything else.
Yeah.
We had an opportunity to record anything else. If any of our committees wanted to record something and give it to me, I could pass along to the county.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Jane, for doing this research. We didn't, we didn't pay the Fayetteville Observer to send a reporter here. And our budget is very stringent and tight as it is. The needs of our departments far outweigh the needs of paying a publisher thirty thousand dollars. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
The, the only suggestion that I had was that I had spoken with somebody from WIDU, but I don't want to speak on their behalf. The other mayors do have their own shows, and you can, you can live-stream it. Mary Warner can put it on her page, you can put it on the town's page. She can interview staff, she can bring other board members up here to talk about different things that's going on in the municipality. So, and again, I don't want to speak on their behalf, so you all will have to have a conversation about, about that. The other thing was, I was thinking about it today, and I forgot it at home. I get a booklet from FSU and one from UNCG when my son graduated. And they come about quarterly, and it's, it's a booklet. And it's almost like, instead of having a state of the, a state of the town, you're having like a state of the town in a booklet, where you have an update of things that have happened through the municipality. So, and it, and it wouldn't be like in January, it would be at the end of this fiscal year, going into a new fiscal year, to inform people and update them about what's going on. I see the figure here for two thousand eight hundred dollars. And I'll see the, see the comments about going green. But for instance, myself, and I know a couple of commissioners here, we request a paper copy of an agenda. I work on the computer all day. So the last thing I want to do is scroll through the computer screen, reading through stuff. So I asked for a paper copy. And I understand that the green, and I understand that social media is a way to attract a certain demographic. But I still believe, and I see we're pinching pennies now in this budget, that a municipality of our size and growing, we need some type of way to communicate. The only downfall of having a annual or state of the town is that you don't get to talk to your citizens about what's going on, what's current. But it is a way to give them, to give them something in print of what has happened in their municipality. I just think it's sad for a municipality, again, of our size to have no, no real source of way to communicate with our, with our citizens. And so I'll leave it at that, but I do know that we are pinching pennies here at this budget. But going forward, those were some things that I had thought about. And thank you for your research.
Your honor.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, most of you already know how I feel about this, but a lot of citizens, especially your seniors, they really enjoyed having a Hope Mills paper, even though it was two pages. And we did have reporters and all that submitted items for us. We had staff that would call and say, "Well, we're doing this and we're doing that." They like hands-on, and I think getting something like Mr. Zell said, if they're gonna do it daily, then that would keep the people updated of what our staff is doing and what the town is doing. And maybe if they knew exactly what was going on and how we're pinching pennies, that they'd be more receptive for a tax increase or something that would help us get back to where we should be. And I would be in favor, if the, if the rest of you would, I'd be in favor of looking at the Up and Coming again like we did before. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns or questions?
I got one.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I think right now, I like what Mr. McCray said. The, he said podcast that the mayor from Fayetteville was on. I've seen that a couple of times. I've actually watched it on my phone. I like, I like something like that, if the mayor would be willing to do something like that, if they could check into it a little further. But until we get the budget stuff ironed out, I, I just think we need to try to keep researching and trying to find something. I, I know what we're wanting, we're gonna have to pay for eventually. But right now, until we get some, some more of the budget stuff ironed out, maybe we just need to table this for a little bit.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor, to table to a later date. If that's appropriate.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next on our agenda is the, is new business, that's all about old business, new business, and that's the looking at Hope Mills Lake ordinance. And Commissioner Bellflowers, we don't have ordinance to look at, so...
Well, I know, and I talked to, thank you, Mayor. I talked to Jeff Smith over the weekend, he called me, and he called me again today. And he was telling me about the things that were in the, in the letter that he was sending for, to be read during public comments tonight. And probably one of the main reasons he called me is because he knew that I, that we were instrumental on the ordinance when we were part of the Lake Advisory Committee. So during the conversation, he said that a lot of folks were, were told or assumed or read, which they did, because I looked at it, that the town was gonna charge for kayaks and canoes. And we've never done that, and that wasn't the preface of the Lake Advisory Committee at all. The, the only, the only charge that I know of, and it's in the fee schedule in last year's budget, and if you look in this year's budget, you'll see it, the same thing. The only fees, the only fee is for motorized boats. That is in the fee schedule that's been adopted. And I asked him, I said, "Well, where did you see this?" And he says, "It's right on the Hope Mills Lake homepage." I said, "Okay." I pulled it up, and it's there. And it, and it shows where there's a daily and, a daily fee for non-motorized boats. And then I called Jane, or emailed Jane, and I said, "I don't believe the ordinance is correct," or, "There was an issue with the ordinance." And she looked at it, and she found that it was an incorrect, an outdated ordinance that was there, and she corrected the ordinance. So what I'm asking, since the board doesn't have an ordinance tonight, is that if Dan was to, if the board and Dan was to review the ordinance, because it does have a section that's probably gonna have to go through a strike, and that's on page four. And you probably, you probably have it, Dan. I, I just looked at it myself. Where it does talk about residents of the town may operate a non-motorboat on Hope Mills Lake without a permit, but non-residents of the town may obtain a daily permit for the operation of a non-motorboat from the town launch at the lake by paying the currently required fee. There is no required fee. The required fee is only for motorized boats.
Can we ask Lamarcos?
Lamarcos, I mean, you know, I think you probably know about what this is, too.
Lamarcos, I apologize. This could have been something that would have, you wouldn't have to be in front of the crowd, but if you'll just answer, please.
I read the day, and I understand. The way it's written is confusing. So the way it's meant to read, it says in parentheses, "Town residents may operate a non-motorboat on the, on the Hope Mills Lake without a permit." So that's there. The problem is, it should have been a sentence all by itself. And then on the next sentence, it should have said, "Motorized vehicles, five-dollar daily or yearly, fifty dollars." It's in that one sentence, it says residents, and then in parentheses says, "Non-motorized vehicles, kayaks, canoes." There is no fee. So what I, what I talked to Megan about today is changing it where it says specifically, "There's no fee for motorized, non-motorized vehicles, canoes, and kayaks." And then on the next line, "For boats." It's always been five dollars a day or, or fifty dollars yearly. There is, there is a requirement, all, any type of vehicle or apparatus on the lake is supposed to have a permit, but it's no charge for it. Just a simple fact of coming to Parks and Recreation and getting that, because we kind of want to know and have a record who's on our lake. But there isn't a fee, and there never has been and won't be. The wording is confusing on the webpage, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
And we also, you've got the, the information here? If we could just make sure that we let Mr. Smith know?
Absolutely.
Because he's, he lives out of town. He's not, he probably is watching this right now. But the idea would be is so that he knows we're gonna correct it. Hopefully, he hears us. Yes, sir.
May I, with Lamarcos? I think we were around at the time that ordinance was drawn up, and I thought the ordinance used to read a non-combustible engine. But you're saying any motorized vehicle, electric or gas?
Right.
Okay, I thought it was, I thought it always said non-combustible engine.
And it's always been motorized.
But thank you, sir.
Thanks.
That'll do it.
Yes.
Question for Commissioner Bill. Why are you wanting to strike now?
There was, there was something in the, in the ordinance when I was reading it, and it's on page four. I'll probably give it to Dan to look at.
Which section is it?
It's Regular Permits.
Lamarcos got it now.
Section sixty-two dash sixty-nine. Section sixty-two dash sixty-nine, and it's in paragraph B. The issue was that non-residents of the town may obtain a, a season permit to operate a non-motor boat. So anything that's in that paragraph that talks about a permit and all, and a non-motor boat needs to be stricken.
If I'm not mistaken, there's two sections in those ordinances about the lake and, and the piers and stuff. I think we got, they, they need to be, uh, merged together when we were going through all those ordinances, and I'm not sure they were ever merged. That was when we were in the process of, uh, getting our ordinances, um, whatever, whatever the county was doing to them. Do you remember? It was really before Jane's time, too.
Yeah. Well, and that's the reason I brought it up, Ma- Mayor, I mean, we, we just go back and revise the ordinance, that's all.
What's that?
No, this is the one that's there now.
You're saying one sentence says you don't need a permit, and the next sentence says you can get a permit?
Yeah.
So, you just look in there?
I got it.
Okay. Same one, Jane, that you, it's the last adopted ordinance that we, that we adopted as a board.
We go to the tax office and people.
Because I knew it wasn't there.
If we're gonna revise this order, is the question, do you wanna have a permit or do you not want to have a permit?
No permit for, for non-motorized boats.
The only thing we've ever said was motorized.
Then, yeah, and it's in the, it's in the fee schedule, in the budget, motorized only.
Right.
Just for discussion, I, I, myself, I would like to see us do a way with the permit for, um, residents and non-residents for non-motorized and.
That's what we're talking about. Yeah, it's not there.
I'd like to, you know.
I think the, and I would just interject, one thing I remember from all those conversations was that the reason that we were looking at having some form of permitting was because we realized that we were gonna have so many people on the lake, and we wouldn't know who was down there, and we wouldn't want to get beyond a capacity for safety. And we looked at if we had a record of who was, not a paid fee, but a record of who was there, it would help as far as knowing if who didn't come back in or, um, how many people were actually out there. I don't remember, but it seems like that Chief Hodges gave us a, a number that should be on the lake.
We have, we have in the ordinance, we have a limit of twenty non-residents.
Yeah.
So, and so that's, that was our way of knowing, um, and then the same thing with non-residents. We had, uh, the idea wasn't to charge them, but it was to, just so we'd know who was out there.
Yeah.
But I did think, we talked about the fact that if you weren't paying or getting a permit, to come up here to get a permit, then to go back down to the lake, and especially, uh, on the weekends, that that might, you know, you'd have to do in advance. I think we did have that conversation. Um, so possibly would be, just look at that ordinance and see what's, what would work.
Well, I, I think that's why we said you could get an annual permit.
Yeah.
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 I think we've got a couple sentences in this provision that we may wanna revisit if you don't, if you don't want a permit for a non-motorized boat. But if that, can we, can we get a consensus of the board, is that what we would like?
I would, I would say to include trolling motors with the non-permitted, 'cause unless it's a combust, a combustion engine, I mean, a trolling motor's not doing any.
That's just electric.
I think we actually have it, um, motorized defined as any boat that has an internal combustion engine on it.
Yeah, over in definition.
That's what I thought it was.
Over in definition, yeah.
So you wanna just let, that, let Dan bring this back to us at our next meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's my motion.
All right, do we need that in a form of a motion, Dan, or can we just by consensus? Okay, all righty.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, ma'am, I thought I remembered that non-combustible clause in there somewhere.
Okay. All right, then, next item on our agenda is with the manager's report. Do we have any additions to the manager's report? No additions?
I've got some questions, Mayor.
Okay, so questions for the manager?
First one about the, um, the renovations down at the concession stand at Big T's. Where are we?
It's just about finished. They were painting the walls, uh, final coat of paint in the walls in the bathroom. And soon as they get all that done, then the fixtures will go in.
They installed the fixtures today? They were installing the fixtures today.
Okay, uh, once that's done, it'll be done. Uh, I know there were some lighting fixtures in the, uh, out in the outbuilding, uh, that had to go in, and that's it.
Okay. Reason I ask this, you know, there's been people that's asked about it. And then, you know, I look at, uh, Donna and Timmy Gray, I mean, it's, they're, what, in three months now of a contract that, uh, there's been no opportunity to draw any revenue because of the, because of the construction. That's been going on now.
I think that they, you know, they did, our guys moved signage and everything, but they worked for them to put their food truck up there. I think they chose not to put their food truck up there. Uh, that, that was their choice, not ours.
Okay, they chose not to do it, okay. Second item I have is, is on the one sixty D amendment. I question why was it conducted or perfor, or, yeah, why was it conducted by, by Triangle J County of governments? When we belong to Mid-Carolina Council of Governments?
That was probably my recommendation, they were doing it for a bunch of different towns, and they had a pretty reasonable price to, to do it. It would've been quite an undertaking for the town to do it internally. So I, I believe I recommended it, and James or someone who might be able to do it for a very reasonable price.
Okay. All right. And, and we paid for that out of what contract services? Okay. All right. That's all, that's all, Mayor.
Before we move on, if, if I may, just revisit the, uh, lake ordinance. In rereading it, um, the way it's structured right now is residents don't need a permit, non-residents do need a permit for non-motorized boats. And, and we've got the provision of, you know, uh, only twenty, uh, non-resident season permits will be issued. And then the other twenty on a first come, first served basis. So that's currently how we have it set up, where residents don't need a permit, non-residents do. I think that was sort of the, the way we were trying to control how many boats were on the lake. Do we wanna get rid of the non-resident requirement, is that the goal?
Not a bit, uh-huh. I mean, how do you know who's residents and who's a non-resident unless somebody's out there?
It'd be hard to enforce.
You don't. You don't.
I'd say we, I'd say we get rid of the non-resident, too. I mean.
That's what we're talking about.
There's no, there's no way of controlling that on a Saturday if you don't live in the town. You just say, hey, I wanna go paddle around a little bit. There's, there's no way to track that, there's no way for them to even get a permit that day. So it's kinda.
That's an easy pick.
It's kind of a mute point.
Yeah.
It really is. I mean, how you gonna control it?
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I might be out in left field, but it seems that the taxpayer money that was gathered up for the dam to have the lake, that that come from some state funds that Mr. Warner and Mr. Doka got together and got for us to work on that lake. So the tax money that fixed that lake, repaired that lake, uh, they, if their tax money went to repair that lake, why wouldn't they have the right to use that water? I'm just asking a question. Anybody got that answer? Opinion, Dan?
What was the question again?
When we rebuilt the lake, both time, or first time, excuse me, state taxpayers pitched in on the fund by the request of Alex Warner and John Doka. Why wouldn't those people have the right to use that water? It's their tax dollars who backed it up, and their tax dollars repaired the lake.
I think he's referring to that the money came from the state so that it should be the lake open with anyone that wants to use the lake.
That's what I was trying to say, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I mean, if that's what, if that's what the board, that's, that's easy to do. I think there is access to the lake for, for residents and non-residents alike. We just have different permitting schemes for, for those who have access.
All right, we good? All right, any other comments in reference to the town managers or any other questions for the town manager?
We drug it through the water pretty hard to see that.
All right, we're to, we're down to, um, of course, we have the committee meetings coming up for this week. There's no real report from the committees, um, uh, at this time. What I would like you to know, and I would like for you to put on your calendar, if you will, the one hundred thirtieth birthday, um, committee met on Thursday. And we have, we have an event coming up, and it's gonna be a pop-up art event on June the twelfth. And it's also gonna be the day that at eleven AM, we're going to do the, um, unveiling ribbon cutting of the Friends of the Hope Mills Library Park. And Adam Wallace will be here that day with the new sculptures. There's six new sculptures gonna be emplaced in the park. And Adam Wallace is also gonna be here down at the opening of the, um, Friends of the Hope Mills Library Park, because one of his, um, sculptures will be there. So we're gonna do an invite to the community and also gonna get as many of the members of the Friends of the Hope Mills Library Committee back. And this, the, this committee was established, and the library was actually opened up in nineteen ninety-two, but the committee was established and was running back in the eighties. So we feel like, um, it's appropriate to, um, try to get those officers, um, if not here in person, but by Zoom, we'll try to have them so they can see the, what their funds have to take. And we'll give more information about it, but I did want you to put June twelfth at eleven AM, um, and that would be a ribbon cutting on that side of the park. Tentatively, and, uh, Mr. Brechner's here because he's our, I call him our art and re, our artist in resident. Um, but we also have the possibility of our second mural being ready for that day also, on June twelfth. And if that, as we move, maybe by our next board meeting, if in fact that's gonna happen, then on that same day, we'll unveil that mural too, and that will be on Trade Street. So those are two upcoming events that, uh, just recently came to the calendar. We met with our one hundred thirtieth, uh, anniversary committee. Yes, sir?
The vote, don't give that memorial a remembrance ceremony.
And, and of course Memorial Day, I, uh, we mentioned it a while ago when we talked about the, the proclamation. But more, Memorial Day is at Veterans Park on the thirty-first at four PM. And of course, with the new renovations out there, too, I think it's, uh, exciting that the, they've got the sidewalk in, the, uh, handicap parking and, and also the, um, the new benches in, the new fences in. Uh, and also they're gonna be adding some names to the, um, memorial, um, plaque, because we do have some more people that are being added down, veterans that will be added. So anyway, so that's upcoming events that we would like for to have, make sure that we have the board there, uh, to be a part of those events. Anything, any, anything else that I've missed?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I, I would just like the, um, the, the meeting for the, with the county commissioners, is there a date that, that is, a evening that is good for everyone? That's not on a committee night, that we can give the town manager so he can contact the county commissioner so we can stop pushing this off? Mr. Leg, I know you say you're going out of town, sir.
I should be back about the twenty-fourth of June.
I know that they're in their budget, they're in their budget deliberations. So it might be better to let them give us some dates, and we pick from their dates, would that work?
Did you all notice of what their schedule was?
I know you sent one, I think they're having a meeting this Wednesday or Thursday? I left my calendar at home, but they're having.
Yeah.
Okay, I just saw the one date on, on there.
But I'm thinking that might be if, if they would, um, give us, uh, maybe to give us some choices that we could look at, because otherwise, we'll, whatever day we pick, chances are it's gonna be a conflict. But that, and, um, Mr. E, Charles, Commissioner Evans, Chairman Evans was, of course, he was at our mayor's coalition meeting. And then we had, uh, Tony Stewart and, um, Jeanette Council at a meeting we attended. And all three of them were in agreement that they would love to meet with us, um, but we would need probably to get their schedule better than our schedule. So if you could do that, that would be appreciated. And then we could find out if, if they give us dates, what date would work for us.
Madam Mayor? And, and with, um, those of, those that work, probably early morning or in the afternoon is probably better.
Yeah.
So not like in the middle of the day, if, if that's okay with them.
Right. Okay, are there any, uh, staff comments? None? All right, official comments up here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, if you're, if you're talking to me, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, we'll start with you, sir.
Drew, I really wanna thank you for all the hard work you've done on this budget. Trying to make things happen, some of them won't happen, some of them might, you never know. I'd like to thank the rest of the staff for all their input and their hard work. Mr. Zell, thank you very much for everything that you've done since you've been with us. And Dan, thank you for your advice. I'd like to thank this board for working together and not biting each other's head off and trying to understand that things happen, and sometimes we have to work through it. That's what I tell my wife all the time, she still burps at me. And we, let's not forget, uh, state softball district tournament coming to Hope Mills the eighteenth of June at Broward Park. And then the District Eleven baseball, seven, eight-year-old coach pitch will be here on June twenty-sixth. As I told you, I will be out of town, I'm taking my wife on vacation, but she's going to my family's house. So I win a little bit, lose a little bit. Uh, we'll be leaving here, uh, Wednesday morning, and we'll be back on the twenty-fourth. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and God bless all of you.
Thank you.
I'm good right now, yeah, everything's good.
Mayor, protest?
I think we ready to get into the second part of this budget.
Commissioner Edwards?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Bell Flowers?
Let's get it on.
All right, so at this time, do, this time, we appreciate everyone's attendance this evening, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
I'm gonna let you take about five minutes, and we'll start back our meeting, our budget workshop.